Sixteenth, twenty twenty four, if you'll join me in prayer and pledge.
Heavenly fathers, we come to unite. We thank you, Father, for the blessings, the mercy, and the grace. Father, we ask you to watch over this proceeding tonight as we do the business for the citizens that we represent. We ask you to bless all of our employees and each citizen that here and the visitors of our city, Father. We ask you to guide us in our thoughts, Father, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Patrick.
Here.
Pete.
Here.
Donald.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Angie. And Bernie.
Present.
All right, we have a full quorum tonight. We have no announcements, no public hearings, no announcements, presentations, or proclamations. I do have an amendment I'd like to make to the municipal docket, and all of y'all have seen and received a copy of the repeater installation agreement. I'd like to take that up under the police department, make that a under the police department. I got a motion.
Motion.
Second. Got a motion in a couple of seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to approve the minutes of the mayor and board of Altona for January the second, twenty twenty four on our regular, and twenty, January second, twenty twenty four for the executive session, and January ninth, twenty twenty four, work session. Motion to second, any discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a couple of seconds, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the planning and development commission, January eleventh, twenty twenty four, regular. Motion to second, discussion?
Second.
Second, motion to second. Do we have discussion?
So, real quick, on the splitting of the property there on, uh...
North Nicholson.
North Nicholson.
Mm-hmm.
Can somebody remind me, because we discussed, they're using lift stations there now. Is that what we're going to continue to do?
Grinder station.
Grinder, excuse me. We're going to continue to do that until require that, but the city won't maintain.
Right, what we've got, I think, is three suggestions from David, or three different thoughts, if I remember what I read correctly. We could put a line, pick up those existing grinder stations, or we could let them go with the grinder stations at really no cost to us. That would allow them to go ahead and continue with grinders. The grinders won't belong to the city. It's totally their responsibility, and they will be connecting to a two-inch force main.
And we're going to require a check valve.
And a check valve.
That's right, okay. That's, I remember, but I just wanted to go, so do we need to approve it with that? Or does our approval previous supersede?
I, I could jump in. I actually tried to write, we tried to put in our letter recommending approval that it would be subject to the conditions of your December third approval or whatever. And I think in our letter reviewing that minor subdivision, we put that in there, that it should be subject to your previous approval about use of grinder stations.
And the only reason I'm questioning it is I want to make sure that we're buttoning up any loophole, but it didn't say this, or it didn't say that.
Agreed.
You know, and that's why I want to mention it tonight, so that we're all on the same page when this goes in. So, what I'm also hearing is, Timmy, correct me if I'm wrong, as well, by requiring this, if we get a grant, or down the road, we do the work, we put the lines in there, then it's still up to them, there's no, there would be no extra cost to us in the long run, correct?
That's correct. We could put a service to the property line, and they would essentially tie to it.
They'd have to tie into it, and they could continue with their grinder pumps, or they could bypass grinder pumps and go straight into us.
Okay.
But I, I think what we really need to do is, is we need to do an amended motion that would say we're recommending the grinder pumps be hooked up to our system at no cost, not, no ownership to us, but on the property owners.
Before we do that, to Timmy's point, Timmy said-
With the check valve.
Yes.
Well, according to item number three in here, what I'm reading, it says with the possibility of a check valve.
We need to require a check valve. Joe and I have dealt with this on North Island View, where we've had to go back and add some check valves on existing lines to keep the city from being liable of sewage backing up onto the properties.
Backups, right.
And that protects us, then?
Correct, absolutely. But at their cost.
And it's on them to, the property owners, homeowners, to make sure that that's put in. It's not, nothing, no cost to us at all.
Okay.
But I have a question, because I do get calls on that. There are the existing grinder stations, and they, we do have to go out and make service calls on those. Now, that whole property, just those people that are wanting these grinder stations, there are no other possibilities of anybody else buying and not wanting that, and, I mean...
This is one person that's developing this.
And that's it.
Four lots, Ms. Levinson.
Right, but what about other property out there? What if somebody else wants to purchase it? Are they going to be required to do grinder stations?
You talk about property or homes themselves?
Any property, whether it's going to be developed, or a homeowner, or whatever. I mean, I'm thinking, long time looking, what happens to, if I go out there and buy a lot, am I now going to be required to do a grinder station?
No, if you have sewer accessible to the lot, you don't have to. You can do gravity plug. These don't have a sewer main that they can just dump directly into. They have to pump it to the main.
All right, so the issues we've had in the past, though, is that going to cause any issues to these new grinder stations when they all merge? I mean, I know that we've had issues.
Yes, ma'am, we do have issues up there, and I believe David and their engineer have worked that out to make sure that that system is all going to work coherently with each other.
Yeah, that's part of the design process, of course. It kind of, it makes assumptions about how many of the grinder stations will be pumping all at one time, but they're DEQ mandated assumptions. And so, we're, the design, what they're proposing conforms with DEQ standards, and it, they will all work together. The existing, plus the new, plus other properties on North Nicholson that might one day want to build, they could all have grinder stations there.
And the only reason that grinder station is not working is because of what they're flushing.
Correct, and that's my issue. Is that going to disrupt the other ones, cause any issue to another homeowner?
No, ma'am, it'll just be pressurized back flowing up to that one. We'll have to keep that one going. And the reason that we own that one is because that grinder station is in the city limits. These will be on private property, so therefore, it can never be deemed back to the city unless the city somehow accepts property there.
Okay.
So, I'm clear, are we going to mandate the check valve, Joe?
I believe so. I think it's a good stopping point. That way, people don't like to mess with other people's situations, I guess, in this. So, that way, they will never be messing with somebody else's situation unless that check valve has failed or something like that. And I think that we have a shut off and a check valve. That way, we, the shut off is the city, the check valve is theirs, and is there a check valve, anything after that shut off? When we cut that off, it'll be theirs from there on. It'll be their check valve to maintain and keep up and make sure that that's working.
I did not actually pull up y'all's, the minutes from that early December meeting, but I know that that was the condition you guys approved it on, is that the check valve is required. I didn't actually pull up the minutes to make sure, but we've conveyed that to the developer.
Well, we've run into a couple of times where we've approved something going, well, we did this previous. That's the reason that I kind of brought this up, so that I want to make sure all the boxes are checked. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll offer a substitute motion that we approve the minutes, making, adding to the, the property... I'm sorry, I'm...
Grinder station requirements.
Requiring the grinder stations with check valves and, and shut offs.
Second.
All right, we've got a substitute motion to second to approve the planning and development commission minutes with the inclusion of the North Nicholson lift stations to include the check valves and shut offs. Any more discussion?
No, sir.
Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. Approved documents, claims number oh one one six two four, motion to second?
Motion.
Second. Got a motion to second, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have unfinished business, the twenty twenty three paving plan, motion to second for discussion?
Motion.
Second with discussion. I know we had talked about the railroad street, and I think Patrick had voiced his concern about pulling railroad street off. So, we kind of got with David, and he gave us this alternative. And one of, you know, one of the other, one of the alternatives added on here that we had requested, or some of us, was from Daughtry Road to Klondike Road on Commission Road. Asphalted it, grinded it, I think, is the edges. And as you can see, there's some more stuff that we've put on there, and it comes right to where our total is. Let me, let me ask a question right quick. You talked about the commission from Daughtry to Klondike. David, does that include any milling that we need to do?
We did, we would need to do some milling, including there at the school tie-in where there's curb and gutter. I did have that in there.
Okay. Where it says overlay and striping. It doesn't say anything about them. But you do have it in there. Raise that question.
It was included in the, in the dollars.
In the dollar amount, okay. So, that's not any more addition.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine. All right.
That it? All for the vote?
Yeah. Okay, no more discussion, call for the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have new business, Eagle Scout project, Tobin Loftus. The courtyard is Long Beach Library. Oh, if you want to come up and squat down to that mic.
Well, hello, my name is Tobin Loftus, and I'm with troop two oh five in Long Beach. I am here to request approval for my Eagle Scout project. I would like to spruce up the courtyard between the main library and the children's library. I will be pruning shrubs, cleaning the engraved bricks, and relocating a camellia plant to install new seating, or relocating camellia plant. The seating will consist of two reading benches and a picnic table. I can answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, and you've coordinated with Ms. Socia from the, our librarian. She spoke to me and said that y'all had been in contact about everything you want to do. She's total agreement? Okay, board, any thoughts, expressions?
I talked to him once already. Young man called me, and I appreciate that. Talking to him, because I send him word, too. But I do appreciate what two oh five's doing, he individually, and all the other young men. I appreciate what you're doing.
Amen to that, yeah.
I want to, I'd just like to add, I mean, I believe within this month, you're the second Eagle Scout, and I want to commend the leaders of your scout troop for putting out so many Eagle Scouts. That's, that's something that's gone away and doesn't get the publicity nowadays, but, you know, congratulations.
Thank you.
So...
All right, so, Tobin, let me...
I understand that Denise has signed off on it, but do they still need to coordinate with Bob and his group as well?
If he needs any coordination, I would say to allow Bob to it, but based on the leadership of the leaders and what they did over at the cemetery, for the Quoll Cemetery, they're not going to need any help.
Perfect.
But if they do, Bob Paul with our rec department will be someone. If you can't there, just call me, and we'll get you in touch and figure out what we need.
I need the motion.
All right, we've got a motion, we have a second. Got several seconds, so any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Tobin, you got the clearance, brother. Just wait till it warms up a little bit. All right, next, we have a grant award and agreement, Mississippi Library Commission, collection and development, twenty twenty four. Motion to second, discussion?
Motion.
Second, and discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You ready to move forward, Denise, with that? Next, we have Sheri Messino. Am I saying that correct, Sheri? Did I get close? Messino.
Sheri Messino.
Messino, okay. The Bullards living at, Bullard living at one oh six North Lane. Let me get a motion to second, so we can have your...
Motion.
Got a second discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're ready to go, Sheri. Are y'all ready to go? Either one of y'all?
We were here last, we were here last October and brought this to the council's attention. We had pictures then as well. I was told to coordinate with Cecil. He basically told me he's not doing anything, that that should be, that, that should be dealt in the...
In the building covered office?
Three months ago, nobody spoke with the Secretary of State's office to try to get him out of the structure, and nobody even spoke to the city attorney in three months.
Basically, nothing's been done.
Nothing at all in three months.
And I've gotten the runaround from everyone.
All we have, as you can see in the pictures, is more dumping, and that's over three lots. That's like a half an acre on our block. My neighbors are asking me, what were they doing? Because they know that we came to your last council meeting, and I couldn't tell them.
Let me, let me stop y'all, let me stop you right there. We're going to come back to you, but let me stop you right there. Now, we have had discussion here, and Council Steve, you might want to bring us up to, if you, if you recall the times and the dates, because we have discussed this.
Yes, sir. We, we have discussed it and the, and the city's authority, and what resources we had to do something about it since you've been here on more than one occasion. There was a belief and an understanding that for tax reasons, the property, or at least portions, it's made up of several different parcels. Right, and that at least some, if not all of it, had been taken over, or, or ownership had been given to the state for the lack of taxes. We have since, in the course of your last appearance, found out and determined that one of the lot's owners did bring the taxes current. Mr. Bullard declined to bring his parcel current, is my understanding. Mr. Gunlock, not sure of the status of the other one. But the state does not have the ownership that we hoped they would, because then we were seeking permission from them to take the property and evict him and do what we needed to do with it. The state does not have the authority to give us that, because they don't own it yet. So, there has been activity, and there has been efforts on behalf of the building department, police department, myself and others to identify a way to cure or try to solve your problem. The ownership of the property was not, is not going to help us, quite frankly.
He was evicted off of that property before, correct?
Yes.
How was he evicted off the property last time?
I'm not sure. I can tell you.
The owner?
Evicted off the property.
I came from out of town that meeting, right?
The property owner was from out of town and came in and we had...
His brother.
Yeah, his brother, am I correct?
Yeah, his brother, Lloyd.
Right.
Kick, had him leave when we were out there cleaning up. He then gave us a notarized letter, because he lives in Atlanta, to have him arrested for trespassing if he came back.
Okay.
After a short time, he revoked that letter and let him back on the property.
Brother did.
Yeah, his brother did, Lloyd.
Okay.
Property owner, Lloyd.
Brother would be responsible for all the dumping and the sites on that property.
Correct, correct, which that's why...
He's not getting fines and tickets.
I think we did, didn't we? We cleaned it before.
We cleaned it and evicted him through Lloyd's...
Thought we started condemnation.
Letter, and now we're back in there with him in there, and, you know, the, the property owner before, on one of the other two pieces, said that they let it go back for taxes, or Lloyd, I can't remember. So, we were hoping that the state had it and would give us permission then to go in there and evict him. Now, we've got to work through another process again to get back.
And I think we went as far, Mr. Mayor, as well as assessing the property, leaning the property for the cleanup costs, so that the city would have an avenue to make some claim to it once the state got it, but the state hadn't got it yet.
The state hadn't got it yet, and if they do, we get it from the state, and then we can make sure it's vacated and cleaned, and the building that's there.
Didn't we start, isn't that one of the ones?
That we started condemnation.
Condemnation on, the, what, last meeting?
Yeah.
And we were looking, supposed to get a price on what it would cost to tear it down. So, we did start the process, and I think we were looking at how much it was going to cost to just go in and tear it down. And I think we all actually voted to do, to, once we get it, to move forward with...
The condemnation.
Condemnation and tearing it down.
Mike has, let Mike speak.
We've actually been in there twice. We adjudicated the first time, and then we went back. Y'all gave me permission to let Joe go in a second time and clear it off. So, this is the third time.
Right, and I think we discussed that, and that's why we...
If y'all choose to, but every time it's happening, the city's eating fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Right, that's why we need to tear...
And I think that's why we discussed it and want to go to condemnation and just take it out. You know, let's, let's get it clear for one, one final time, and then that's it.
I own a construction company. We own many rental buildings.
Not here.
Yeah, not here. And there's only maybe three or four ton of garbage on that property. It's only seventy dollars a ton to dump. So, you're looking at three hundred or four hundred dollars in dumping fees, and you guys own, have a Pelican truck with the crane. So, the truck could actually go on the property, pick up all the garbage, and dump it. It would be less than like five hundred bucks.
Yeah, we want the building...
Ten or twelve thousand. It'd be like five hundred bucks.
We want the building down. We don't want him to be able to go back in there.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Because he does go there daily.
We spoke to the Secretary of State's office. We spoke to Derek Cooper, who is Land Department and Tax Forfeiture Division, okay? And he told us directly that this is clearly a code enforcement violation. You need no permission to vacate it from premises due to unsafe living conditions.
He said, so even if the state did own that property, it would still be a Long Beach problem?
Okay, just like the show Hoarders. When those houses are unsafe living, the village condemns them and gets them out. They're not asking those owners for permission to kick them out. They get them out because it's unsafe living conditions. You need no permission from anybody when it's unsafe living. Now, they have no sewer, no water, no electric, and dumping all over the site. They've stolen electricity from us twice. We had to call the cops for animal cruelty. I mean, what more do we need to get somebody who doesn't belong there out of there and just clean up the property for five hundred bucks?
Yeah, I...
That's all we're asking.
Look, we're, we're right there with y'all. We want to get it taken care of and have a final solution on it.
We don't need anybody's permission for unsafe living.
Yeah, Steve, do we know where the house is at on that property?
I can't hear you, Mr. Mayor, over here. I keep talking.
Hold up for a second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Do we know exactly the owner, or do we know the property owner where the house is located? Have, have we figured that out, Mike? Do we?
That is Mr. Bullard.
This is brother.
His brother.
And he still, he still owns, he still owns that property, right?
As we speak right now, he does.
Okay.
Are we within the year to go back on to the property?
I think we have passed that year.
Yes, we have. We've got to go through the process again, but you still have contact with Mr. Lloyd Bullard?
I, I can see if I still have a number. I hadn't spoken to him since.
I think you need to see if you've got a number and can, and see if you can make contact with him and tell him we need a letter of eviction for his brother to get him off that property, and then we need to, and then he needs to give us another, another letter of permission.
He's not going to do that. When I spoke with him last time, I think his intent...
Let's give it another try. Let's give it another try and see what we, let's see what we come up with through another try. And if we can't get that, then we need to move forward tonight, right now, since we, and, and remember, I think it was two meetings ago, that we went for condemnation of the property, so we can move forward with taking that building down and getting him evicted. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And I'll make that motion, and as soon as we can get him, what, do we have to send a letter first? And if he doesn't do it, I mean...
Five to sixty days before that process will start. I mean, we'll start it, but it'll be forty-five to sixty days before we can actually do it.
Before we do action. And that letter goes to Lloyd Bullard?
Correct.
Does.
And can we, we expedite that with board approval after the board votes on that? To get that to him as quick as possible, even if we had to have a police officer drive up there and hand deliver it to him?
I'll second Patrick's motion.
And I'm pretty sure that we, we're not responsible for making sure that letter arrived, like, we have to send it to the address that they have on file, and we have to post it in the newspaper, but outside of that, we have no...
I was just being facetious.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't have to make, you know, hopefully it gets to where it needs to be, but that's on them.
If it doesn't, that's fine, too. We've done our due diligence as required by law. Council, you got any?
Provide it to the property owner's last known address, publish in the paper, and post it on the physical property, the three things you have to do.
We may have to go out and repost it every day, Chief, because he, I'm sure, no, I'm telling you.
You can do that.
I'm telling you.
I'll have it. I'll get it from you and go post it.
Right, and you'll, I want to, I want a armed police officer over there.
Yeah, we go with him. We send an officer with him.
Still, all right, as long as y'all there with him, that's good, because you're probably going to have to post it every day, because I'm sure Marcus will take it down and throw it in trash. So, all right, we have a motion to second. We're moving forward this. Y'all see that we have already, two meetings ago, had discussed this and moved it forward with condemnation. Now, we're, we've added some more juice to it, and we're going to go forward.
We appreciate all your time and...
Well, we appreciate y'all's patience.
Well, I also want to say thank you very much for, everybody here has been really looking out for us. We've had phone calls from the water department and the police department. Your electric cover is open. Make sure he's not stealing from you again, and...
So, we appreciate all your work on us.
We're, we're, we're as, we're sorry about this situation as y'all are, and we've got to get a final on it, so we're moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Any more discussion from the board? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
All right, now, we move to CSX Railroad, Railroad Crossing update. All right, now we move to CSX Railroad, Railroad Crossing update from David Schaefer. Thank you, David. I'm, I'm not used to seeing you on this side of the ballgame. David was with MDOT when we started this project. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, I'm currently. Is it working on this project? Project moving it forward.
Three years ago?
Yes, it's been. What I'll do, I'll give you an update. You look at this sheet. Now, basically what I put together is, is we've kind of gone through, I mean, everything that, that the city can do is done. I mean, every piece of paperwork is, to best of my knowledge, has been signed by the city. We've gone through the, the MDOT local public agency project development process, which is, you know, takes a long time. Couple that with the railroad, um, everything has been submitted to the railroad. And I went and looked at CSX because I wasn't that familiar with the process, but on CSX they have a, a guide on how they do public projects. And there's a, eight or ten steps in that process. Well, we were at the very last point in that. And that is, they're going to provide a cost estimate to MDOT and MDOT will program that project. They'll do a, a rails agreement with the railroad. And right now, we have the full plan specs estimate ready to go to MDOT. All the contracts are prepared, the plans are ready. As soon as they do that, well, that's day zero that I have on this list. And so you can see Neil Schaefer submits the PSNE to MDOT, day one, and then every one of these steps, you see about how long it takes to get through it. And not to bore you with all that, but once we get through that process and go to construction, then there's about a hundred and thirty working days, which works out to be about two hundred and seventy-five calendar days. So from the day that, that they say go and, and turn it in, we're fourteen to sixteen months to actually having the project finished. So if it happens tomorrow, we're looking at fourteen, sixteen months and all those crossings will be upgraded. Um, hopefully no more vehicles getting stranded on the tracks and that kind of thing. But that's, that's where we're at. Um, if you've got any questions, I'll answer as I can.
I, I appreciate this, David. This is a, a, great to have a, a timeline. Uh, when you could add a date to day one or, excuse me, let me go around here to, uh.
Day zero.
To, to, to the date that we, uh, receive an open bid there at the, the number twenty-two days. If you could give us a, a date on there, when, when we get to that point.
Right.
You don't have that point located yet on the calendar.
That's right. And we hope to get that really soon. I mean, we're waiting on it now. I spoke to Josh Stubbs in the Rails Division.
Okay.
Last, I think week before last. This Friday, I'm going to reach out to him again just because he, he was expecting to hear something with him within a couple of weeks. So I'm following up with him at the two-week mark to see where we're at.
Okay.
So I'll let you know as soon as, as soon as we have any update on that.
Well, that's good. I, you know, it's like, you know, the citizens don't understand because we spoke about this over a year and a half ago when we brought it and, and made it public that we'd been working on this for over a year when we were unable to announce a publication on this. I think you had to go back and do more engineering updates after CSX came through and put the new cross ties under because we had an elevation there that complicated the ingress, ingress and egress of, of the tracks, uh, which came off to the road. And so a lot more engineering had to go into it again.
Yeah, and, and also one other thing is during this process, the, the CSX kind of changed the rules a good bit and, and they were requiring some additional drainage study and things like that that they hadn't asked for before. So, you know, they threw in a little curve ball in there about midway in the process. So that's been addressed and I think, I think we've got them happy now. We're just, they're happy with the design, they're working up the cost and then they're going to present that with the, uh, with the agreement.
Okay. All right, y'all, and board, you got any comments? Any thoughts? All right, David, we appreciate this. This is great to see and have, have with us, so we really appreciate it. All right, uh, next we have LED stop sign purchase, Alderman Brown.
Uh, I know we had talked about this at our work session, uh, this intersection that we're redoing over here at Klondike and Railroad, Pineville and Railroad. We had talked about putting the, the nice LED lights up and we had, I think we'd got with David, uh, was talking and requested him to get a price for us to put, uh, two southbound, one eastbound, one westbound, correct?
That's correct.
So this is what that's all about. And at the same time, I know we have some that's at five points, but like the mayor said, those are, we put those up because we had them extra. If you remember, they was that Klondike and Commission.
Correct.
So we could pull them, but it, in the event that we have a issue, that something goes out, we do have spares. We just go have to go take them off the poles and put them wherever we need to for time being. So I, I think it's a good idea for us to purchase these.
Yeah, I don't see by, taking those other ones down.
Okay.
We need to buy the new ones.
Okay.
Put them up.
I, I agree. I think, I think everybody's used to seeing that.
Yeah, we don't need to take them down now.
Traffic floor and us don't confuse ourselves.
Right.
Oh, David, let me ask you a question. Do you have a timeline on when the resurfacing should occur there and the restriping at that intersection?
On that intersection? Um, we actually asked the contractor to update us, he has not, but the contract time expires mid-February and, and I've asked him to tell me your plan to get the project done in that contract time and I think he's working on that. So that's what my expectation is right now, mid-February.
If you get that, uh, any update from him, can you get an email out to the board, full board?
Okay.
And council?
Joe, what do you, what's the timeline on if we order these?
Four weeks.
So about the same time as, about the same time as this contract ended.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
Got a motion, second for approval for the purchase of the, the, uh, new flashing red LED stop signs. Uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Joe, Joe's got it.
Could I clarify one thing? And that's for the poles as well? The decorative poles or do you want to, uh, regular poles on those?
This was not included?
I don't think that bid.
That's separate, Joe.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Poles are a separate deal that, uh, we're, we're looking at.
Do you know, do you know off the top of your head how much the poles are? Do you know how much the poles are off the top of your head?
They're, uh, I have it right here. They are, um, four hundred and sixty dollars for the decorative pole that Jeff Davis.
Should we?
And we've got two.
That's just a single pole that just holds that stop sign.
We've got four.
I, I think we should have added.
I'm going to make an amended motion that we go ahead and purchase the poles while we're at it. Uh, did we say four, we need four of them?
Well, you're going to have two, two on the eastbound, two on the southbound and then.
West and south.
Right now, four.
Well, let's go back and look at that thing. It says six here.
Because you.
Quantity six.
Because you said you wanted to order a couple more to have them stand out.
Two extras just in case.
So let's just do the poles for time being.
So I'll make a, I'll make a substitute motion that we approve the, uh, the purchase of the six, uh, stop signs that are LED, uh, stop signs and the four decorative poles.
That's an extra thousand forty.
Second.
All right, got a substitute motion. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have, uh, the cemetery ordinance, fence and services.
Police servers and body cameras.
Oh, I missed that. How did I miss that? I'm sorry. Let's back up to the police service, servers and body cams, Alderman Brown.
So at our work session the other night, we was looking at the bond issue and everything and talking with the chief of police and I've also talked to Chief Skelly. This, uh, of course the CAD system and so on and so forth, it's time sensitive, it keeps going down and it's been there for quite a while. And also we was talking about the body cameras, uh, same thing. And chief, you was go get a, chief seal, you was go get us a, a price on the, is it five-year contract?
Yes, yes, it is. For the, the body cams is two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five or forty-eight thousand.
We don't have that.
Two fifty-five a year. But I, I was talking with, uh, we're trying to get some state money and we can hold off on that till.
On the body cameras.
Maybe June.
Yeah. Well, you know if you get the state money by then?
Ho, hopefully, so.
Okay, all right.
That contract's up in June.
What about the, the CAD?
No, we, we need those two ser, we need those two servers.
The two servers have been there since you've been there.
Didn't you say they were end of life?
Keep going down and, and every time, I know when I was there, every time it went down, it cost a little bit more. And now, correct me if I'm wrong, I think just about half of, three quarters of stuff there is outdated in that server, correct?
Yes.
They don't have repair equipment.
And we, I think that was on our list and it was, uh.
The, the server and dispatch is eighty-one six and the, the one at the police station is twenty-two four.
Hundred and four.
What was the amount for the other server?
Twenty-two four.
Twenty-two four.
Eighty-one six.
Eighty-one six.
One oh. One oh five, it looks like. One oh four. One oh four.
We got to have it.
This is something that's very time sensitive and I mean, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this.
My only concern, this, I, I mean, we have to have them, but that's, that's a big hit early in the budget of a hundred and forty-five outside of the budget.
Like the body cans, can we, can we finance?
That, yeah, it hasn't nearly.
Body cans not included.
No, 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 but I'm saying like, like it was presented to them.
Right. Yeah, you, you can finance it, but let's see what we come up with on the money. We got a few months and, and I can wait on the twenty-two thousand for the one at, at our station. Uh, maybe stretch that to the end of the year if possible, unless we have a failure and then it'll be an emergency situation. But the one in dispatch, the eighty-one thousand, that affects police, fires, uh, mobile, you know, any ambulance service, any of that, that, that has to be done.
Because I'm not looking at a contract here or anything like that. Do they charge us like setup, you know, in, in that where we would be paying double if we bought them separately?
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm just looking at any, any kind of cost savings.
It's two different companies.
Okay, gotcha.
But we, we're talking, we're discussing purchasing both of them and, and I understand you said we can, on your, the, the server for the police department, we can wait on. However, if you run into a problem, how much are we go spend to get it back up? So I, my motion is that we purchase both of them at a hundred and four thousand dollars.
Your original motion and your original second.
Right, right.
Uh, any more discussion? Hear none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed? We got to know. Roll call, Patrick.
No.
Pete.
Aye.
Donald.
Aye.
Mikey.
Aye.
Tim. Angie.
Aye.
And Bernie.
Aye.
All right, six to one, it passes. All right, uh, now we'll go to cemetery ordinance fees and services, Alderman Fraser.
Yes, sir.
I was said Brown again.
He is kind of hogging the, the microphone right now. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Mayor, at our work session, we discussed cemetery fees, um, and possibly changing up some, uh, some of the ordinance as far as allowing a casket and an urn. Um, since then, we've gotten a email, uh, that Joe, uh, sent to Stacy regarding the water table out there and having multiple, having an urn in a, uh, in a vault or a casket there. Uh, there's some concerns of disturbing if one is put in before the other. So I want to make sure that the board did see that email. Uh, before I make my motion regarding changes, I, I don't know if you guys want to look at, at discussing further or if we should just move forward and, uh, make the changes that we discussed the other night.
I'll make a motion, we move forward.
What, what were discussions and discuss?
So, um.
Make that public.
Yeah, and, and so in the discussion after the motion, so, uh, under the ordinance and, uh, I have this all written down that I'll give you after, uh, under article two, uh, which is the heading of lot, uh, sale of lots, uh, and site, uh, the purchase price currently is five hundred dollars. Uh, we discussed matching, uh, the next, uh, next closest price from, from Past Christian, which is fifteen hundred dollars. And as a reminder, Biloxi Ocean Springs and Evergreen are completely sold out. Gulf Pines is twenty-two hundred dollars.
Which is in Long Beach on Twenty-Eighth Street.
Correct. So what we're doing is coming up to match the Past Christian one. So that would be the first change. Uh, the second cha.
To fifteen hundred dollars per.
Per.
Per grave.
Per plot, yes, sir.
Grave site.
Yes, sir. And, and I'm open to any discussion on these. Uh, then the next change would be, uh, article four, which is use of cemeteries, uh, exercise of rights. Article Four, uh, letter G, um, number two. It currently says no more than two persons, uh, per plot. And what we would, talking about changing that to is no more than four urns under one plot with only one headstone. Uh, and then taking, uh, Joe's advice was, uh, you know, there is a concern about if we had an urn, one urn and one casket. But there are areas that we can do it, so I would say we allow it.
We, we've gotten, um, Joe and I have talked about this and I talked to Donald before the meeting about this, but our water table is high over there. And, uh, in the pro- and we, we've been digging, we've been digging graves.
For a long time.
During the weekend, on weekends for a long time. It cost, I don't remember, it's cheap. We have, we've had to do it. Not cheap, and, uh, less expensive. But we've had problems with when we have to put a vault in and then put the, the casket into the vault, that the vault is, the walls are caving. Trying to get the width and the depth to get the vault in. We also have a problem where we can't reach and some, in a lot of occasions, we can't reach the six-foot depth because of the water table. Uh, so we need to take those into consideration when we're talking about, uh, putting the urns in. If we put an urn in, in first, uh, you know, they want a vault, you know, we're gonna disturb the urn probably. And then have to put the vault probably on top of it to keep it from coming up. But, yeah, I talked to, uh, Jason Green with, with the Rehmanns. And, uh, Donald and I discussed this earlier about, you know, Jason said you could put eight urns in there. But you got a problem still with the water table and cave-ins. And when the, the casket goes in, or if a vault goes in and the casket goes in that, and if, if you got urns in it first or second. Yeah, so that's, that's something we gotta consider. You know, I, I agree, you know, with Donald. You know, these changes need to be made, especially what he's talking about right now, but I think we all need to be fully, fully, uh, knowledgeable of what we're talking about there before we pull the trigger on, on this. Uh, Donald and I also talked about going to Rehmanns about, uh, mausoleums over there to be able to either put casket or, or have a, a vault, a mausoleum there. So I think we're gonna follow up with that next week with Rehmanns.
Well, he also brought up the open and close fees and the Saturday and holidays.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's coming.
That's next, that's next. I didn't wanna get into what Donald's got going on, we're talking about this.
I'm just kinda going down the ordinance in, in, in line there. Uh, so that's Article Four, number G, uh, I mean, letter G, number two. Uh, one, uh, so no more than four urns in one spot with only one headstone. That's, that's important.
The headstone, there's no limit on what they could put on the headstone. There's a number of, of names and births and, and deaths. So that we won't be touching.
Then.
Us now, so.
Uh. Then, uh, basically, we need to, uh, update, uh, number three in case of cremated remains. Each such, uh, urn shall be treated as a single in, uh, instrument and pay a app, applicable fee. Um, so the fees, as suggested, were, uh, two fifty for the first and four hundred for each additional up to the max.
Max being fifteen hundred for?
Uh, four urns.
Four hundred of?
Four, no, four, the number, the max number of four.
Okay. Alright, I've seen what you're saying now.
Okay.
Okay.
Then the next change would be under Article Nine, number A. Uh, increasing that fee from five fifty to seven fifty for the permit. That's a dis- dis- basically the, uh, moving of a body. Yes.
And this is all in line with other cities?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The next change would be charges for burial. And this is where we left it off with open discussion. Um, in there, currently, our, uh, weekdays is five hundred. Um, we talked about moving that to seven fifty for a casket, two fifty for an urn. Um, we need to strike holidays out there because that is listed under General A. Um, and then we talked about Saturdays. At this, at this moment, we're, we're having to pay overtime and the, uh, sem- uh, funeral homes don't have the manpower to do it on Saturdays to come and open the casket. So it, that's falling on the city at our expense at overtime. Um, that's gonna be something that, uh, at the boards.
I thought we had discussed removing Saturday.
I thought so too.
We talked, we said remove a Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
Okay, so, so then, so then we would strike, correct?
Cause other cities aren't doing.
We're just going by what other cities.
Correct. Uh, others.
Rehmanns refused to do it because they've gotta call individuals in and overtime.
Correct. The, uh, the other cities do not, and then the National Cemetery does not as well.
Right.
So, uh, so striking Saturdays off of that list as well, under, again, under Article Ten, Letter A, General, under the fees. And then, uh, where is it? There is. Okay, um, and that, that would be the only changes. So, again, I'll kinda go back, cause we were discussing what we had. Um, I'll start over real quick and kinda breeze through them again.
Are you gonna, are you gonna make this in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
So we can go ahead and take that down?
Yes, sir. So, so my motion.
Okay.
My motion here is, uh.
Second, all right. Okay, go ahead, Donald, I'm sorry.
To, uh, change the price from five hundred to fifteen under Article Two, Letter B. Article Four, Letter G, number two, no more than four urns with only one headstone. Uh, number three, uh, the cost of the cremation being two fifty. Uh, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, an urn, two fifty for the first, four hundred each for the second, third, and fourth. Then Article Nine, Letter A, seven hundred and fifty dollars from five fifty. And then under Article Ten, Letter A, uh, removing holidays and Saturdays. Uh, and the weekdays cost will be seven fifty and two fifty for an urn. I mean, yes, that's my motion.
Sunday in there?
Yeah.
Sundays are already stricken within the ordinance.
So your motion is to send it to council and let him dr- redraft it, cause we are gonna have to have a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. That's, that's included in your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was my second.
That was your second. The only discussion I got, and, and there's nothing in the ordinance pertains to this. We used to have a section in the cemetery there for single grave sites. We try to do two, but you buy two grave sites right now. And if it becomes a single burial in there, that the other one could be sold back to the city at the cost, at the exact cost of what they paid for. So if anybody comes back now and say, well, look, I had two, my wife and I, you know, I, I remarried, my wife's there already, I don't want that site, they sell it back to us.
At purchased price.
If, if you bought it for five hundred.
It will be at purchased price.
They sell it back to us for five hundred.
Correct.
Uh, if they buy it for fifteen hundred and we, we have to buy it back, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
Make sure that's it. But I would like for us to look and, and see, we have a little bit of a new section in there that we could possibly make, you know, thirty grave sites to single sites. And maybe add that into the ordinance. Uh, but I, I don't think it needs to be added in now because we don't know if, if we could designate a certain little section in there for thirty or so sites without taking away from our, our multiple site locations. So that's all I've got to add to it, so.
I think that's a good idea. We discussed that at the work, at, before the work session.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's something we definitely need to add.
Definitely need to do. So I just wanna make it, you know, uh, those that wasn't here for the work session and it's on the, uh, YouTube or whatever we're on out there in the world, uh, that they're aware of what we're doing, so, uh.
Worldwide web.
Worldwide web, okay. Alright, do we have any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next we have, uh, sidewalk ordinance. Uh, it's Alderman Brown again.
Well, this is, come back from our same work session where we discussed the, the, um, the fees and whether we wanna do away with this ordinance. I think we need some legal advice. I think a consensus of the board was ask our council if we did away with the, uh, the charging of.
In lieu of.
The in lieu of fees, wh- where are we on people that has already paid?
It, it has no impact on the, on the people that have already paid the city at any time can, can change its policies and practices and fees and rates. They, they can be disappointed, but they have no recourse against the city.
And I don't, we're, we're going to have to, this is another, as Donald was just talking about on the cemetery ordinance. This is something we, we need to discuss because do we want the, the three options or do we want two options? Which is either put a sidewalk in or you, you don't put a sidewalk in and you're not required to pay any money? Or do you put a sidewalk in or you pay in lieu? Or if it's not, i- if it warranty, warrants it, uh, the not having to pay? Cause we have, like we discussed this last time, there is some, some areas that, uh, it's not feasible to put a sidewalk in unless the city wants to remove some of their fire hydrants and oak trees and guide wires and we're still making the people pay for it.
Yeah, and we're still, and there's, the other thing we gotta consider, you got sewer lines, water lines, water lines that might be run, running right under that sidewalk for a distance that could have to be came back and pulled out. But there are certain situations where I think, you know, that it, it interferes with the, with the homeowner, the builder, or, or whatever that puts a burden on them that, uh, in lieu shouldn't be put on.
I, I mean, my opinion is if we're gonna be changing the ordinance, we need to go to the two options, either you're putting it or we, we give variance. I mean, that.
Well, and that, if that's.
Everybody else's opinion, but that, that's.
So our subdivision ordinance would cover us for, for a new subdivision. So if we're gonna do that, I, if, you know, if we're gonna guarantee a variance, then we might as well just get rid of that ordinance completely. You want a sidewalk, put a sidewalk.
It's still not guaranteeing the variance.
Oh, I, okay.
No, no, it, it eliminates the in lieu of payment. They still have to come, bring it before the board to get the variance. And we look at them individually and decide.
If you got, you got a homeowner coming in, they say sidewalk on each side of, we're not gonna give that variance.
That was discussed in the workshop. That's exactly what we had discussed. But if there's, uh, North Nicholson Avenue that's getting ready to have two or three, uh, homes being built there and there's nowhere for this sidewalk to lead to, why do we do it? Why are we doing it?
So, that's the, that's the two, that's two perfect examples right there, so.
That's your motion?
That, that's my motion.
Alright, your motion is to, uh.
The two options, either you put a sidewalk or you.
Or we look at a variance, or we looked at the variance. Okay, and then we've got a second?
A second.
Alright, and we've got two seconds now. Uh, we have any more discussion? Here, none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have two eight, uh, Lantana Boulevard. Uh, we have anybody here? Yes, yes. Christopher Sanchez, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all for coming in tonight, uh. Uh, we need to address this. I, I, I don't know that we'll, this is a side, uh, the, excuse me, the, uh, this has to do with our, our old evacuation route. And the homeowners that are encroaching into it with, strictly without approval, uh, from the city, cause we haven't vacated that at all.
Uh, the house.
They look like they possibly encroaching on the homeowners to different properties there. And I would, I, I just want y'all to be aware of this and see if we can get some direction. Maybe council can look at this and give us some guidance on what we need to do.
We've actually dealt with this for quite a while. There was a previous owner that lived behind him.
Mm-hmm.
Mike sent letters and all that, then, um, he put the house on the market and somebody just bought it, it wasn't too, very long ago.
Yes, Mr. McCaffrey.
And all this was resolved.
Right.
And come to find out, it hasn't. And I believe you have sent more letters to her trying to. We sent the new residents a letter as well. We have not heard back from them. Get sent them a letter.
How many days did y'all give them to respond? Or do you?
Thirty, apparently.
Is it thirty?
Can.
Not sure exactly, exactly how many it was. For response, but we did send them a letter. I wanna say that was around the first of December and we have not heard anything back.
So I, I just wanna, real quick before, uh, Steve, I wanna kinda revisit this whole situation that we just recently dealt with.
We discussed.
With the gentleman that was parking his.
RV.
RV on this right away. So this is what happens and why the city took the actions to not allow him to park on that. So I wanna say that, which has nothing to do with you, sir.
I understand, but I noticed that.
So we are making the attempts that if you allow one and then everybody else takes advantage, this is where the city has to say, you cannot park on there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Joe, if I am correct, this is a area that your department mows, correct?
I'm looking that up right now.
Oh, I believe we've walked this in the past.
We've walked it.
Could you not?
This.
This is on Lantana in the back of the new section of Green Acres. Can you not send a letter to the properties owners saying that we are coming through to write our prop- I mean, basically clean our property and either you remove the fence or we will remove it for you?
Well, I'll be happy to send a letter.
What did your letter say that you wrote to him?
They needed to remove the fence.
I mean, why do we have to have Joe do that?
Okay, well then, then we don't, uh, and I'm just kinda going off of memory here.
Yeah.
So we could adjudicate it.
We don't even need to adjudicate it.
Because it's on the city property.
I think we need to get our, our attorneys up here on that.
I think, I think we continue.
Yeah, I, I'd recommend, uh, an attorney from, city attorney saying you failed to respond to the building codes office. This is official notice, we're gonna come take your fence down that's encroaching on the city's right away. And you can do it at your own expense or, or we'll, we'll charge you for it.
Mike, how long ago did the letter get sent from your office?
I believe that was around the first of December.
First of December.
We sent to the new resident. Have this been the go, an ongoing issue because it was two separate residents?
I like council's, I like council's idea of, uh, following up with the letter from.
Motion?
I can email all that information in the morning.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, have council send him a letter, uh, basically issue him an ultimatum.
And we'll, we'll put a drop dead date line for it to be remedied or the city will take action.
amended.
Discussion.
Got a motion, second discussion, finally.
So my last, is there, is this the only fence? I mean, I, I think what we need to do.
There's several more that need to be addressed.
As a city, to right this problem, to correct what we did the la- or two meetings ago regarding the RV. I think that we need to instruct our, amend our, uh, motion to include any fence or any other property along that line that we need to correct it. And that way, we're correcting from beginning to end.
Absolutely. I agree, I agree with you, but, uh, I'd like to get this letter out first because he is having some.
Sure, I, I understand.
That drainage issues.
So we need to get this remedied as soon as possible.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I have no, I have no issue with that.
I, I would, I would agree that it needs to go out urgently, but I, I don't think it would take an hour's time to go out and find out what the other addresses are.
They're, excuse me, they're right next to the house behind me on Miranda Lane, sir. So that's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
And there's only two neighboring houses to it.
Yeah, so you could get the address and call his office tomorrow with it.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to talk to him.
He's got.
Okay, so.
I think what.
Both of those residents.
We got him, so.
So Mike, you'll send, you'll send your letters out and then if we get anything, then council will send their letters out. Cause other.
He said he was gonna send them all.
You just go ahead and send them all?
Yes.
Y'all okay with that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, do we have any more discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hopefully this will correct your issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank y'all. Thank you for being patient with us.
Thank you for your service too, Mr. Sanchez.
Alright, department business, mayor's office. I do not have anything, do I?
I don't think so.
Okay. Uh, personnel, police department have, uh, new heroin step increase seven and resignation from the fire department, got a motion.
Second.
Second, uh, any further discussion? Here, none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, city clerk, revenue expense report for December of twenty-twenty-three, uh.
Motion.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Here, none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a budget amendment, FY twenty-four, streets and drainage, motion, second discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Here, none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have city depository beard award, uh, motion, second discussion?
Motion.
We get a sec? Alright, Keeney, you wanna explain to us, cause we've sent this out, the email to all of them and, you know, it's got it in their package, so.
I did. Uh, we sent out, um, advertisement requesting proposals for the city depository. We received four responses. Three of them were bids, one was a letter saying, you know, thank you for interest, but they were not gonna bid at this time. Um, all of the proposals we got were pretty close. There, there weren't a big swing. But the one that we received from Pa- People's Bank, once I compare interest rates and bank fees, was the most advantageous, advantageous to the city.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We've had a motion for discussion, uh, based on Keeney's recommendation for People's Bank.
People's Bank.
Uh, we have any more discussion to approve People's Bank as our new depository? Alright, here, none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have, uh, fire department, part-time employees, uh, motion, second, uh, for a discussion and approval?
Second.
Uh, discussion. Any, any questions for Chief?
Where, where are you gonna get them from, Griff? Any?
Uh, we were, we are gonna use some retired guys with experience and that's, that's where we are right now. With the lack of experience we have at the, uh, at the department, um, on savings, on, uh, you know, on overtime pay, um, appearing to send a- as, at present, seven guys through the fire academy. Uh, starting, uh, February on, on through the summer. And, uh, like I said, besides, uh, savings, it will give us, let us bring some guys back that have some experience, can go right on vehicle, fight fire, uh, help us out, basically.
I think it's a great idea. I was just wanting to know what source you were gonna use.
Alright, we'll, we'll be using some, some retired guys that.
Pete? Mikey and I applied for it already.
All I can do is drive.
Two exceptions.
I'll second Pete's motion with those exceptions. Mikey fall off.
George, your talent's lying supervision.
I will say this, uh.
I think it's a great idea.
It is a good idea and the other departments are picking up on this, cause Chief Skelly's not. It is a good idea and the other departments are picking up on this because Chief Skelly's not the only department on this coast or in this state that is having issues keeping people, so...
Yeah, I, and I would just ask one more question, Griff. If, if you had a full-timer, if you had a full-timer from, say, Pastor Stan Goport who wanted to come part-time with us, would we entertain that?
Absolutely. And we'll put, we'll put it out, what we're looking for and, uh...
We want it, we want them from departments that don't pay as much as us.
Good luck.
So, they'll, we, they'll like it and come put their application in here.
Good luck with that.
So, all right, we got any more, uh, discussion? Uh, all those in favor of allowing the part-time hires?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That would need a little bit more energy on that boat, guys.
Aye.
Now, thank you, Donald. All right, uh, next, we have, uh, for discussion, uh, add Cucks Road to Long Beach Fire District. Chief?
Yes, sir, um... Eight, ten years back, uh, the county decided that they thought the industrial park in that area was in the county fire district. Uh, had some discussion back and forth. Uh, Chief Brown was, was still, uh, chief when we first started this. Uh, proved our point. Continued on, we said, okay. There it is. Um, not going to go to battle over it. So, uh, now, we're asked to take, we'll take an industrial back over when, when we get in our new fire station and we've been asked to go ahead and take Cucks Road back over. Most all of my career and y'all's career, we have covered that area. Uh, the only situation with it is it does not have water to fight fire, but county has already implied that they are willing to be automatic response, bringing tenders and, uh, and water supply to us uh, in the, uh, in the event we have a fire there. So, it would, uh, we would depend on them to supply us with water.
How, how many houses are we talking roughly?
There are eleven houses back there, I think is the count. Uh, now, I've spoken to the mayor and, uh, we have talked about trying to get a line or get with, uh, Dr. Ladner, supervisor for District Three, to talk about or try to get a water line from Beetline Road to the first curve in Cucks Road to start with while, while they're doing the road movement in that area right now. And then there's another way, uh, Joe and David looked at it for me and there's a right-of-way just about directly across from where Station Three is on Johnson Road. There is a power line that runs through there and it comes up to Salvador Lane. It's, it runs right with Salvador Lane that is in the next curve or just past the second curve. And if we could get a, a water line and a hydrant there, we would be well on our way to having some coverage for those houses in there. Um, that, that's just an idea and that's a proposal.
And you spoke to the State Rating Bureau?
I did. I did speak to, uh, Mr. Richard Watkins. Uh, he did inform me that this would have no negative effect on our rating, um, that he could see. And, uh, he, he thought we would be fine with it. He's under the same feelings as us. That little area is strange right down there. Just south of that is Pastor Shan's area. And then if you go a little bit behind Pastor Shan's area, it's back in the county again. And then we are right in the curve. So, that's a weird little spot in the fire districts there. But he said, why would you pass a fire station and a fire truck to go cover an area and them sit, sit there? So, uh, he said, no, it, it was, it's fine with them.
We've had three occasions, one of them being Cucks Road, where when the county had to respond, there was a trailer that was lost and we've had an industrial building in the park and a large home in the park that, where they've had to drive by us to get to it.
That's correct.
And, and I, we have two experienced firefighters here, so I'm going to ask out of ignorance, if we are going to take that over and this county's got to respond anyway because you're dependent on them, what are they gaining? Not that I have a problem with it, but what are they gaining by us?
I'm not sure right now if their Station Thirteen out in Quavas area, and, and this is just speculation. I, I would have to make a phone call to find out for sure. I'm not sure that Station Thirteen is manned twenty-four seven. Think Station Four is right up the road by West Harrison and, uh, and the next one up, which I think is Station Three, I think is twenty-four seven. They would be coming straight down County Farm Road to us.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm not sure that the old Quavas station is a twenty-four seven, uh, manned fire station.
And, and therefore, you think that's what the need is?
That's what the need, that and, uh, just, just to help cover it. They have to come from such a long way just to get to that one little road.
And that brings in the, the water supply situation because...
According to...
Tender...
So, can, let me ask you this again, due to my ignorance, can we not tap that creek in an emergency situation for water supply?
It's not deep enough for us.
It's not?
I think they'd have to be a, we'd have to establish a, a, uh, a, a dry pump there.
But it would have to be, uh, down below. You would have to have a hole dug there.
Right.
Be pretty significant.
That would have to be maintained to put a dry hydrant in to be able to pull a vacuum on, to get the water up there. Our problem is we don't have a tender and we don't have a folding portable tank. Or we're going to, that we got to depend on the county to get in there. We could empty a truck out, uh, you know, a thousand gallons of water in a matter of three, four minutes?
Five minutes, yeah.
Five minutes? And we have no more water to fight fire with, so they got five minutes to get there.
Yeah.
So, what Griff was alluding to with having a twenty-four hour station makes it possible. And I think that's the problem they got into with these other fires they've had. They've had no twenty-four hour protection at those stations. You got to wait till they get there and then respond from the station, so...
According to their map on the MS Rating Bureau, it is, uh, Station Thirteen and it, it doesn't show that it's manned twenty-four.
The one by West Harrison is, I know for a fact that one's twenty-four seven.
Never been manned twenty-four seven unless they've...
So, my, my question is, nine-one-one, chief seal, y'all don't patrol Cucks Road. So, will you go just route it through the county for the time being?
I think so, for the time being. Uh, there is some, there was some manipulation of the nine-one-one system when they took the industrial over and we're going to try to get that converted back.
I would have cured this one.
That way, it comes straight into us.
I would have cured this, buddy.
But as, as of now, no water there. I don't mind it, that call coming through the county because I'd rather get them moving at the same time we...
I think that makes sense.
Then I like the idea of approaching Dr. Ladner or the one coming from the power line.
We still have to do that.
If they'll do that.
And that's just a proposal and, and that would be a good thing, but you never know.
I'd like to make a motion. We accept this and review this in six months and see, you know, what we're looking at. Get a report back from Chief Skelly and see, uh, you know, if, if everything is working the way we need it to work.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Okay.
Call for a vote. All right, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. It was a good discussion. Uh, next, we have, uh, engineering, no, police department. Uh, with police department, this is where we add a day to repeater installation agreement. Uh, chief, you want, you, well, let me get a motion, second of discussion, discussion and approval.
Second.
I got a motion, second of discussion and approval. Do we have any questions or thoughts before, uh, chief comes up with this? Y'all all, y'all fine? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's good. Move right along with that.
Trusty.
Yeah. All right, now, we'll go to, uh, engineering, change order, J.E. Borries Incorporated, Harbor Southeast Shoreline, Bulkhead, motion, second discussion and approval.
Motion.
Second.
All right, this, this is the additional cost for the additional, uh, uh, piling, excuse me.
Test piles.
Test piles, test piles. And, uh, David, you want to discuss what, explain this because, I know we've all got copies up, but we got, we got to remember we got people watching on live.
Understood, yeah, we had, uh, as y'all know, we had...
Make sure you get into the mic where they could pick you up back there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, as y'all know, we had worked for, or worked towards seven test piles needed for the, these future bulkhead projects. We had had a price given pretty quickly for two. This will be for the remaining five test piles that are needed to support these future bulkhead projects. Um, know that a lot else makes sense to talk about, but I'll fill in any details if y'all have got questions.
I've got a question that's not on the test piles.
Okay.
They, according to Hunter or you or somebody, uh, Prestress was supposed to have fifty percent of the sheet pilings done by the middle of this month, correct?
I, I think that's pretty much the, the latest info. They have them cast. We've been pushing the contractor to please have Gulf Coast Prestress give us some actual delivery dates. I, I can't seem to get anybody to give me actual delivery dates, but I, I'm, I'm asking for it. Please tell us when the piles will be delivered.
They were very communicative in the beginning.
Yeah.
Nothing now?
Well, I'm, I'm talking with the contractor. Gulf Coast Prestress isn't working for me. They work for the contractor, so I'm requesting info from the contractor and, and he fills me in and says, yeah, we, we're going to get those cast and they're ready, but he hasn't given me any delivery dates yet.
We need them... We need them to give us a timeline to know. We've talked about before in, um, our meeting here, because I asked for a timeline of when those things were poured, cast and cure time and delivery time. And we need to know those, those specific dates because we're sitting here again with, uh, with a lack of that information. And I think maybe, uh, Mikey could give you a name of somebody there that you call and he'll call and we'll, should get some communication.
I can reach out to Mike.
Yeah, we can get...
Just point blank ask him, see if we can at least get some answers, if you don't mind. I don't want to step on...
I do not mind at all. I, I, I wouldn't mind calling them myself. I just normally, my, my route is with the people who have a, who I've kind of got a, a contract with or that the city has a contract with. Gulf Coast Prestress is not in that contract, uh, relationship.
Okay.
Not directly.
I think it's fair for us to be able to ask that question. If we're not getting it from our contractor and we need to send a letter to the contractor with the same thoughts on, on when, when the casting is and, and when the cure date is and when the delivery date is. We expect that from him, too.
Yeah, I, I asked for very specific info about that, uh, on yesterday, on Monday, and kind of got some generic response, not specifics.
No, we need specifics.
Will you hit him up again and send me his response and then I'll wait to hear from you before I call? Or you want me to...
I, I will do so, absolutely.
Thank you.
Probably need to call and make sure that...
That's why I said call them anyway.
In the same dates.
Bless you.
Is it not outside of our contract for us not, for the contractor not to provide the timeline? Wouldn't that be something in the contract of, with the contractor that they have to give us a timeline? Should have been, but it didn't.
We sit here and discuss it, but they were only here for the work session on it. And so, yeah. All right, uh...
If, if we... One other thing, David, if we can't get an answer, can we, uh, request that the contractor be at the next board meeting?
Could, absolutely.
If you don't get an answer to your satisfaction, will you...
I'll do that.
Somebody know the mayor's office unless request that he be, he comes to this next board meeting?
I'll go ahead and give you permission now to send him a letter.
I'm going to send it, I'm going to let him know that I'm requesting his presence if he doesn't give us enough information in the response.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's what, that's what we need.
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, next, we have, uh, five, five hundred West Railroad drainage i- issues. Uh, motion, second discussion and approval?
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Uh, David, uh, you and I talked about this. I got this information the other day. I took it to you. It's been discussed back in, I think, December, maybe November. I can't remember when this was discussed. Yeah, December, discussed in December twenty-three to try to remedy this situation. Uh, so, I'm, your discussion on what you've recommended in the board?
Ab, absolutely. Y'all, y'all may recall, we kind of offered three options, uh, at the beginning of December. Um, one, to go to, to provide additional drainage capacity straight south from On Alexander from this property, the five hundred West Railroad. One would be to improve the, the existing ditch line that kind of runs west behind Chevron and, and then drains south next to Fuji across this railroad street. And a third option, which would be to provide additional capacity by building new drainage on Shady Lane. I think at that time, y'all requested that Public Works go out and, and clean that ditch, which I, I believe has been done.
They have been playing, they have been playing.
And that, that function has happened. So, then the mayor filled me in that one of the major concerns apparently from, from this resident is a long Kohler Street, which is there, that, that road that kind of intersects with Alexander right next to the police station. Uh, I think water is perhaps coming across Kohler and across her fence line into that property. And so, one of the options there would be to build, um, you know, to construct a swale that would capture that water and channelize it over to our existing drainage. Uh, and then you could do any of those three options that we just talked about. But I kind of think like a base, if you're going to capture what appears to be the problem, you have to build a swale and pipe to bring it south down Alexander. Uh, and so, those...
Railroad, right?
I'm sorry?
Across railroad?
So, if you, if you want to do the additional, to go all the way across railroad, you got to, you got to, and these are my estimate of a bid price. You got to spend about sixty grand or so to build a swale and some culvert to get to the existing drainage on Alexander and then another hundred and seventeen or so to get across railroad street. Now, these are, again, are bid prices, uh, my best estimate of them in, as, as it stands right now. That, the base work, what I'm calling base and shown in purple on this exhibit and alternate one shown in orange on this exhibit is, is the two lowest hanging fruits, I think, to, to improve drainage.
Where is the outfall on, on base one? It talks about an outfall line of the five hundred West Railroad Street. Where's there an outfall?
It, it would connect to the existing pipe that crosses Alexander.
Yeah.
So, we would have to bring drainage to that point and then you could do nothing else and just count on that existing drainage infrastructure.
How's that going to...
Or you could do alternate one.
How's that going to fix? That culvert is, is higher on the west side of Alexander and lower on the east side. How's it going to drain? You're going to have to replace that culvert and make the...
You could replace that culvert. I mean, I think we're talking about...
You don't, we're not doing anything.
Well, okay.
Add more water around it.
I think you're talking about, uh, it is reverse sloped, no doubt, but I think we're on the nature of inches, not feet.
Well, no, we're not feet. Well, no, we're not feet.
So it's gonna, it's gonna hold a little bit of water, but that doesn't really impact the drainage function too badly. But you could certainly in...
That's two rains we've had, it's flooded back on there, if we got pictures and hear from it.
I'm with you.
But, here's my problem with this whole project, this piece of property has been a bowl since the beginning of time. If I go buy a piece of property that's a low piece of property that's always flooded, it's up to me to elevate the property to keep the water off of it, not the city to go spend the minimum of fifty thousand dollars to keep the water off your property that's been coming on forever. They, when I develop subdivisions, we go in there, we, we put the roads in, we elevate the property.
That's where, that's where one of the previous owners had went in there, there were junk cars put in there, they went and dug a hole out to bury cars in, and then they tried to cover that little swampy area up.
That property's always flooded up. I've always lived right around the corner, I've always lived within a hundred fifty yards from it. It's always flooded.
Well, it, it has.
And I just have a hard time spending sixty thousand dollars...
They put that culvert in when they built the, the low-rent project across from Central Station, back when, I was a firefighter there, sent lieutenant to Central Station, and they were having water problems on the property, so they went down and they let it drain down there, and then they ran it across to that property into that slough that was over on that side, private property on the other side.
I, I get, I get...
I just don't, I think what you're saying...
Either we fix it, or we don't.
I think what you're saying is, the price doesn't justify pulling water off of one property.
Make it a drop piece of land.
A commercial property.
That, that's my issue. So...
That's a lot of money, or an issue that the city did not cause.
So, let me ask you this, Joe, could y'all not dig a swale?
Yes, sir, we can.
Just to, I mean, let's, let's start, let's just do this to begin with and build a swale around the property to that pipe?
Sure.
'Cause, did it flow better once y'all cleaned out behind the hop end and all that?
Yes, it did, I promise you.
Flood twice since then.
No, but she had, she had water in vehicles, or he had water in vehicles, and there's nothing around there now. It did flow a lot better, 'cause that was slapped, stopped up.
But it was, they had, they had, before it was clean, they had, uh, water in the vehicles.
Yes, yes, I'm...
If the property were to be built up...
If the property were to be built up, the cars wouldn't flood, would let, in my opinion.
But can we at least just maybe start and do a, a swale, what you asking?
Uh, it, it doesn't pertain to your question, your discussion, but in that first picture that we have with the culvert, a- after Joe's diagram, I mean, David's, uh, diagram, it looks like there's another pipe there, and, and I'm going, is that us as well? Do you see where I'm, I'm...
Looks like it's a sock pipe.
Like sock pipe.
Yeah.
Is that drainage from the north there? That wouldn't be anything we put in.
But what, a ditch was, gonna say no, we, a ditch was covered. We covered the ditch there, right?
The people that owned that property years ago, that buried all those cars in there.
We, we haven't covered any ditch.
Yeah.
Right there. You're talking about on their private property? No, there, there wasn't, that got covered years ago.
I can't say yes or no.
From what I've been told, there was a ditch through that property years and years ago, before I was here, and it was covered up. I don't have that history.
Yep, it was, there was a drainage ditch all the way through there.
That was before it was a lumberyard.
That was before the towers.
But I, I, another property, yeah.
It was filled before the lumberyard.
Correct.
It was filled all the way over, right there at that last bit.
Even back when it was a lumberyard.
They built it up around where the pipe came, after they put that lower end on, they built up around it to try to keep it, and they were kinda pushing it back.
And, and I guess, I guess that's my issue, 'cause back when it was a lumberyard, that whole area still flooded. So this isn't something that the city has done any work around, or allowed any development...
Only thing the city's done is put a pipe across from the west side of Alexander to the east side, where it's higher on the west side and lower on the, so it's a reverse drain onto that property. That's the only thing. If we're not gonna do anything, take that pipe out, fill the road in, and don't let it drain anywhere.
But then it has absolutely nowhere, then it has nowhere to drain.
Or fix the pipe where it drains in the right direction towards the ditch without coming up.
How bad is...
But I, I don't know, that's why I asked the engineer to give us some suggestions over here.
Have y'all shot that pipe to see how much it's fallen, whatever direct, you said it's fallen to the east?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I believe it's like an inch or so, I, I don't have that number.
So it's basically a level pipe, so the pipe being there is...
No, it's not level, it, it's higher on one end, if it's, if there's an inch higher on one end and an inch lower on the other end, it's one inch, so it's not level.
But it's still allowing water out of her property flowing west, correct?
Say that again?
If the ditch is full on the other side, it's not going anywhere, on, on the west side, it's not draining.
Water will level itself out, it's gonna level.
So, but the water is working its way across Alexander and under railroad from that property?
Yes.
Where, where at on, on Alexander is it working its way across?
Comes right there by the Fugees, crosses by Fugees.
That's where it crosses railroad.
But on Alexander, where's it working across Alexander to drain?
At that culvert.
At that culvert, is it going through the culvert or over the road?
Going through the culvert, from what I understand. I don't, I don't see it topping, it hasn't topped the culvert many times.
You what?
I said, I, I'm not aware of it topping the culvert.
Chief, you, have you seen it across the road right there, or you recall?
The, the only place I see it standing is on Kohler.
Kohler and Alexander.
So if we did a swell there just to begin with, why don't we try that leading to the culvert and just, I mean, I, I wanna help the, the people, but I'm...
That's something Utility Partners are gonna do, not bid out for fifty-something thousand dollars.
Yeah, and, and I mean...
Dig a swell in a day's time.
At a certain point, too, it's gonna be on the property owner to elevate their property.
Correct. I mean, I mean, that's, that's where I stand. But I, I'm all for digging swell to see, to, to help get some of the water around there faster.
For discussion, not for action.
Go with the swell.
So, I, I...
We're not rushing to do anything.
How much is a swell?
Need to bid it out, you're looking at flavor, fifty thousand.
No, we're talking, I, I'd like to make a motion that we let H-two-O, not Utility Partners, H-two-O, construct a swell from Kohler to the drainage pipe on Alexander, and let's just say that would be step one and see how that works. Second?
I got a motion, a second, to, for H-two-O construct, construct a swell and see how well that works. Uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, next, we have, uh, Public Works, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Recreation's not here tonight, uh, Building Office, Mike, you have anything?
Sir.
And Municipal Court is not here tonight, uh, Harbor, David? Okay. Uh, Community Affairs, Courtney's out, uh, Derlich Properties, one oh eight Park Row Avenue, assess cleanup and penalties?
So, Public Works has cleaned, um, this property, and at the pleasure of the board, um, we could assess the cleanup and penalties against the property. So, um, what you would do, you would have to select a penalty, um, it would either be fifteen hundred dollars or half of the cleanup, which is three eighty-five, eighty-five.
My motion is to do the max of the fifteen hundred.
Second.
I got a motion, second, do the max of the fifteen hundred.
I do need a roll call, 'cause this is a resolution.
Any further discussion? All right, Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Yes.
Bernie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next, we have, uh, Zero via Don Ray, assess cleanup and penalty?
Same situation, uh, penalty can either be fifteen hundred dollars or three hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-five cents being half the cost of cleanup.
Motion to, uh, assess the fifteen hundred.
All right, we got a motion, a second, to assess the fifteen hundred. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Aye.
And Bernie?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
I thought you said, say yes.
Thought about it, thought about it, but...
Motion, a second, to adjourn.
A move.
Got a motion, a second, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.